Okay, we're gonna call this week in the needs committee to order. We've already had the pledge. Um, who went over to Tommy? Go, Tommy, is there a story to go along with Mr. Grinnell where he...
Sure.
Two sides.
Okay, Tommy's ready to order the story.
We won.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first thing on the agenda, I'm gonna invite up public health. Ms. Linda Beer. Ms., I'm sorry.
Good morning. So, I thank you so much for having me allowed to come here in front of this board today. Meg Parker will be finishing up the end of this week with her Creating Healthy Places grant. And we wanted to take this opportunity to give her a plaque, appreciate her for all the wonderful things she's done in every community in Essex County. Thank you would all attest to her amazing contributions during this grant period. So, I'd love to invite Meg up if I could and leave this plaque to her.
Please. Meg Parker, come on down.
She was running late because she was just dropping off tools to be inmates. Right to the end. So, this plaque says, "Certificate of recognition of Meg Parker for outstanding contributions to Essex County Public Health Department as the Outreach Coordinator for the Creating Healthy Places grant. Whereas the Essex County Public Health Department would like to recognize the outstanding contribution, her tireless dedication to health and well-being of the citizens of Essex County, and whereas in 2010, Meg began an affiliation with Public Health Department as an outreach coordinator for Creating Healthy Places grant. And during her tenure as an outreach coordinator, she promoted digital mapping recreation areas for future reuse and was instrumental in the success of the Thrall Dam and multi-use recreation areas. Whereas, Meg has developed policies and population-wide initiatives which will support the prevention of chronic disease by increasing physical activity, increasing access to healthy foods, improving air and water quality, and decreasing mental health stressors. And whereas Meg, through stewardship, every town in Essex County has benefited from. And whereas, the Essex County Public Health Department is grateful for Meg's dedication and hard work for the citizens of Essex County." So, thank you very much.
Thank you and congratulations, Meg. I'm very proud to say Meg comes from my community. She does an outstanding job there also. Thank you. Okay, Dana, roll call.
Mr. Mall, excuse. Mr. Harrington. Mr. Maryhew. Mr. Gardner. Mr. Depot. Mr. Farabee. Mr. Blade. Mr. McNally. Mr. Skazapava. Mr. Cannon. Mr. Pallidi. Mr. Moore. Mr. Marnell. Mr. Whitson. Mr. Grinnell. Mr. Connell. Mr. Galloway. Mr. Preston.
We do not have any other guests, so I guess we're gonna move right into resolutions.
Resolutions recommended by the DEW committee. There are no resolutions. Resolutions recommended by the Personnel Committee. Resolution authorizing the administrator of the Workers' Compensation Self-Insurance Plan except year two of a three-year contract agreement with Prama for workers' compensation, employers' liability insurance in the amount of $684,120 from January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2017, and further authorizing the chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. Cannon, seconded by Mr. Maryhew. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolution approving the Essex County Self-Insurance Budget and Workers' Compensation Town Contributions for 2016.
Move by Mr. Grinnell, seconded by Mr. Whitson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolutions from the Finance Tax Reduction Mandate Relief Committee. Resolution authorizing the re-levy of unpaid 2015, '16 village and school taxes and all road, water, sewer, and garbage rents on the 2016 levy.
Move by Mr. Maryhew, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of a web-filtering device and a maintenance contract from Layer 3 Technologies under New York State Contract PT 65090 in the amount of $10,700.
Move by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolution authorizing an upgrade to the Penimation software to provide for the Employee Access Center for employees' leave and benefits in an amount not to exceed $15,000 with funds to come from IT Capital Project.
Move by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Grinnell. Any discussion? Mr. Blade.
Hey, Dan, the question regards to this resolution. The, uh, the new time software that we purchased last year, that doesn't take care of the...
It does not do a good job of the leave and time benefits. What we're doing now is we're actually taking the punches from the clock and moving them over to the Leave and Time Benefit Program that Don Markwika had developed. Don is no longer with us, so we think by upgrading this Penimation software, we will still be able to use the clocks by dropping in the punches into the Penimation software, but the leave and benefits will be taken care of within the Penimation software.
Okay, so you'll actually be having, using two software programs?
Well, technically, but one will, will... See, the time clock punches have to be dropped into the Penimation software at some point, so that would've occurred anyways. This, all this does is extends the ability for the Penimation software to account for Leave and Time Benefit Module, which is an additional module which we never purchased before.
Okay, Dan, anyone else? Any other questions? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Under miscellaneous, resolution authorizing a budget amendment in the Mental Health Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $5,000 for Systems of Care Grant.
Move by Mr. Skazapava, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Any questions? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolution authorizing the appointment of John Tibbetts as a member of the Essex County Community Services Board Alcohol and Substance Abuse Subcommittee for a term effective October 5th, 2015 through December 31st, 2017.
Move by Mr. Blades, seconded by Mr. Skazapava. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolution authorizing the appointment of Wendy Beeman as a member of the Essex County Community Services Board Developmental Disabilities Subcommittee for a term effective October 5th, 2015 through December 31st, 2016.
Move by Mr. Skazapava, seconded by Mr. Maryhew. Discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolution of appreciation to Meg Parker, Essex County Public Health Outreach Coordinator for the Creating Healthy Places grant on an outstanding job promoting every township in Essex County.
I would like to move that, ask for unanimous second?
Second.
Thank you.
Resolution adopting and approving quality improvement reviews and policies and procedures for the Certified Home Health Agency and Preventative Services approved by the PAC on September 1st, 2015.
Move by Mr. Harrington, seconded by Mr. Cannon. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolution authorizing the Public Health Department to accept a 2016 car seat grant in the amount of $7,550 from the state of New York.
Move by Mr. Harrington, seconded by Mr. Grinnell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolution authorizing a budget amendment in the Office for the Aging Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $18,532 for Community Services for the Elderly.
Move by Mr. Marnell. Is there a second? Mr. Harrington, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolution authorizing a budget amendment in the Office for the Aging Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $3,233 for triple IE caregiver services carryover?
Move by Mr. Connell, seconded by Mr. Blades. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolution authorizing the chairman of the board to enter into an agreement on behalf of Essex County with the New York State Office for Children and Family Services for the 2015 Comprehensive Plan for Youth Development Program funding as provided for in the 2015 Essex County Budget.
Move by Mr. Harrington. Do I have a second? Mr. Maryhew, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolution authorizing a budget amendment in the Community Resources Department, increasing revenues and appropriations in the amount of $256,750 for Five Towns One Gold Grant.
Move by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Are there any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
Resolution accepting the 2016 Stock DWI Plan as approved by the DWI Advisory Board and approving expenditures in the budget.
Move by Mr. Connell, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried. I think we've got one miscellaneous out there.
Yeah, this is a resolution accepting grant funds from New York State Archives Local Government Records Management. Joe applied for a records management grant and was given one in the amount of $25,027. He will be using that grant for some of the records management archives over in the clerk's office. So, we need a resolution accepting that in the amount of $25,027.
Move by Mr. Maryhew, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried. Anyone else? Curiosity of the floor, Mr. Patty Vash.
Okay, so because we didn't have one couple... I did, I went to Judy.
We're not complaining here, fair weather. Yeah, it's number seven on second.
And then when we just found out, just, um, so we have four cars. We actually downsized a couple of years ago. We did an audit of our time needed in the cars and we downsized to four from five. And, um, or after this money came in. So, this is, I found out just the other day that R38, when it will go back up for inspection on, uh, in February, won't pass inspection because of resting, uh, on the car. So, this will actually...
Yes.
Yeah. All right, just want to make sure. I mean, sometimes I have to use circles, sometimes I... Okay, so the second thing is, I just want to give you a little bit of background before I ask the ask. So, there's BIP money. It's $267,000 that we've been, we've gotten permission to accept a while ago. I've been talking with Dan about this quite often and, um, so I had to go to the Salary Committee twice with a Plan A, which wasn't acceptable. I totally understand that. And then went back with a Plan B. The Plan B was, um, uh, three basic things, but one of which was to subcontract with a vendor to, um, have a staff person hired at that subcontractor to, um, help me meet my benchmarks for BIP, which runs until, um, 12/31 of next year. Probably sustainability money with that, but I'm not even going there right now. So, the committee approved that. I started working on, um, the contract because I needed to bring it to Human Services. Linda had a discussion with me, Linda Walsh, saying, "Well, this needs to go out to RFP." Okay, I get that. So, we went to RFP because this couldn't be sole source. Linda spoke to Dan about it, um, on a couple of clarifications. And the long and short of it is, is this, this person could not be working full-time in my office. This happened, I guess, a few years ago with the feds came in and recouped a bunch of IRS federal, um, funding to, to somewhere like $80,000 right then because we had folks doing just that in our county. So, I cannot, my position and my ask to you guys is, I cannot have this person not in my office. It defeats the purpose. This person's a call taker. They have to be working with my staff. What I'm asking for real clearly is a person from November 1st of this year to December 31st of next year, and at that point, that position would come to an end. And that's why I handed out to you guys this morning. This is 100% funded. There's no county match to this. So, that's my position.
Let me, let me just clarify a little bit. This is what we talked about, the committee actually talked about. As much as possible, I prefer not hiring grant employees because honestly, at the end of the grant period, we always run into this, "Well, should we keep the individual? Should we not keep the individual?" So, at the point, at the time, I recommended that we do a contract with an outside agency for this employee and we would use that employee through a contract. And when the contract was over, the position was over. Patty, Patty's understanding of it and mine were completely different. I felt like it was gonna be a contract agency working within whatever contract we, person that we chose. Patty says it will not work. She does not believe it will work unless that individual sits within her office and works out of her office. The problem with that, and the problem we ran into, and Mike Diskin can tell you this, is the IRS came in later and said, "I don't care whether they're contracts or not. If they're sitting in your office and if they're doing your work and you're telling them when to come and when to go, they're an employee and therefore you owe Social Security and you owe taxes." And that's, that's the problem we ran into. So, I relented on this to some extent to Patty and I said, "Okay, if you want to go to the board and ask for a grant employee, which you feel you need in order to make this program work, you can do that, but I just want it understood that at the end of the grant, this individual is gone. The position ends when the grant money ends. I don't want to be in a position of, of having to find money later to hire a physician that ran out of grant funds." So, at this point, I am relenting, so to speak, on this and I am recommending that you do a, a grant hire for this position in a defined amount of time. And at the end of the grant period, it ends as well as the, um, position. Is there any cost at all, Dan, to us?
No, this is fully grant-funded. It really does not cost us. The only place that it, if this thing for some reason got renewed forever and we ended up with legacy costs, then it would cost us, but all of the current costs are covered within the grant.
Okay, Mr. Skazapava, would the, I'm assuming the person that's in the position now would continue?
No, this is a new hire.
New hire. The, um, what, the title, what's the title?
It's, um, in front of you, it's a specialist position. So, it's not an outreach position. It's a little bit higher than that, but not my coordinator is a little bit lower than that, so, um...
Competitive?
Yeah.
Competitive?
Well, yeah, it will have to be...
It was the competitive...
The problem with that is I've asked for a test, uh, like two or three years ago and still haven't gotten a test on that one yet, so...
The only other question, would we be, when the program ends, what about unemployment insurance?
Always subject to that.
Yes.
Mr. Gilliland?
So, when we advertise and we advertise that this is a temporary, not temporary or a, a time-bound position?
Correct.
Grant-funded.
Any other questions? Does anyone have any? Mr. Maryhew?
Just on the worksheet that was handed out, we're looking at the bottom set of rules. Is that correct?
No, no, you're looking at both. So, the top one, I believe, is the first year, the sec, the other one is the second year. I want to start November 1st.
You have a certain amount of time left in this issue.
Yeah, I want to start November 1st and end it next December.
Any other questions? There are no other questions? Does anyone have any interest in moving? Mr. Blade, seconded by Mr. Gilliland. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Pulsed, so carried.
I just want to take the luxury of just two more minutes. Heap has started, I think I told you that last time. The actual heap open, opens on November 16th for new heap applications. We've already been getting in a ton of people who had it last year. It will close March 15th. Emergency heap will open January 4th and run only three months to March 15th, or as long as the funding holds out. And the furnished replacement program, repair program opens, um, November 9th, with right now, there's no closing date, but it never lasts for very long because that's only, um, when the money's avail, or how long the money's available, so...
Any questions for Patty? Thank you, Patty. What else do we have, anything? Donnie, did you have anything or are you just like hanging out with us?
Good morning. Uh, one of the issues I spoke with Dan on is, uh, our attorney for the radio project, we need to add some money to her contract. She's, we can't pay her, we've got like $5,000 worth of bills that we have to pay. Uh, she's still involved in the transition for the tenants off of Belfry Mountain, negotiations with AT&amp;T at Terry Mountain, repair of the tower, and, uh, some other issues with some of the tenants. She's done a very good job for us and, uh, we really need to add, uh, some, uh, money to her account. I'm not sure how much we should put in there, Dan, but I was thinking up to $25,000.
That's reasonable. And where is this money coming from?
Still within the radio project. I was just reminded that she did, she was entering on the, uh, negotiations with $280,000 from AT&amp;T and Verizon on the Belfry Mountain Tower. So, it's not a fruitless act. She's negotiating, balancing things so that we get the best, uh, benefit from our tenants.
Move by Mr. Maryhew. We have a second. Mr. Cannon, discussion? Mr. Skazapava?
I know a few, a while back, we had to increase that, the amount of that contract substantially. And, um, I don't recall all the discussion of the minutes, but I thought, I do recall that was probably gonna cover the rest of it till the end of the project. I mean, we paid well over six figures, I'm sure, to this firm to represent us, this law firm, am I correct?
Yes. We've actually amended this contract probably three or four times along the way.
But again, the project kept growing. I mean, we added the state police and ICE. The original seven-site project, it's now, uh, you know, 11-plus microwave sites, seven-page room, five OMI, that type of thing. So, the project grew because of a partnership with ICE, the state police, ourselves. But it got to be a much bigger project and she's been on, I think this is her fourth year, I'm not sure. And there are still many legal negotiations that have to take place, particularly with Belfry.
This is a per-hour contract?
Yes, it is. It's, I believe it's two, she gets $2.50 an hour.
When, when we did the initial RFP, was, were there any other, I mean, the initial RFP covered these ups and downs within the contract or was it a flat fee or just a, how did we...
It was, it was always an hourly contract.
It's been an hourly contract, but we've been, we extended the amount of money under the contract as the projects continue. The thing with her is, uh, this is a very specialized field. She has tremendous connections all over the place, many of which Donovan and Dan can also verify. Were benefic, very beneficial to us, you know, helping us with the New York State Police and ICE. And she's the only attorney that's so thoroughly engrossed in this project that knows the ins and outs and everything. Once it's over with, I can take care of what's, what's done, but, um, unfortunately, we still need to continue and, uh...
Where does this put us at the end of the day with the overall budget? With the unexpected, unexpected expenses? I mean, is there gonna be a shortfall? Are we going to have to bond for more money? Are we, uh, I don't know.
I don't have the exact number, but Linda has not raised the red flag to me that we're over. Um, so I'm, I can get the exact number, but we are still under the, I'll remind you, we're still under the $10 million that was originally given to me for our nine-site system that did not look stable. It's an 18, almost $17 million project. It's seconded. It's been covered without any kind of funds.
Donnie, what makes Belfry so complicated, other than it's, other than it's in Mariah?
Because we actually built another, another site. We built a new tower and we had, we, I believe we had, there were 27 different antennas on that old Belfry tower. We, we have to move all the tenants and migrate them over onto the new tower. We renegotiate the leases. We negotiated how much they should pay towards the construction of the new tower because the new tower allowed, for instance, AP, uh, AT&amp;T went from three omnidirectional radio, uh, radio antennas to 12 panels, which gives them much more coverage. Those two sites are gonna come online this September.
So, we're gonna be getting revenue back on that, the site and the other sites?
Yes, oh, yes. We've already gained well over $200,000 just in the construction.